Welcome, everybody. This is our fifth session of the Ruth study, which means we only have one week left after this one, and then we'll be done. This is going to be chapter four tonight. Next week, we're going to be closing up with seeing, asking the question of, is this a book for our time? And the world in which we're living and drawing out those big themes from the book and seeing how our world as we know it lines up with that. What are the things that is teaching us even now? But tonight, we're going to be going through this last chapter of the book, which is feels a little bit shorter than the other chapters, but I will still make the most of it. I'm going to open us with the word prayer. Gracious God, thank you for creating space in our lives to enter into the strange and beautiful world of the book of Ruth. We pray tonight as we lean again into her story that you would teach us deeply what it means to be people of hospitality and grace and welcome. Amen. So I'll go ahead and screen share. And so this week, we're, we're going to be looking at, this is a future that we're talking about in this chapter, but whose future is it? Because there's a lot of people in this story, and we're going to see that not everybody we started out with features as prominently here towards the end. And we talked a little bit about that last week with Ruth's fading into the background. But there may be reasoning behind that they will explore. So I thought this was a great picture. It's a picture of Ruth holding baby Obed and Naomi looking over there. Again, fascinating how much artwork is available for this book of the Bible. So the three big questions for this chapter, and we've been doing this every time, but our three big questions for, for this week are, one, where is Ruth? Real simple question, but where is Ruth? Where does she go in the story? What happens? Another question is, what does it mean at the end of this book, coming through all we've been through, to be Gentile in the presence of and alongside the people of Israel? This is a question we've been asking, but have we arrived at an answer? Is there in fact a place for the other? And lastly, coming through all that we have in these passages, how does Ruth function as Christian scripture? How does it inform Christian identity? As we've been, this is something we're going to look at a little more deeply next week. But we're already, as we draw the book to a close, we're going to begin to see and think about some of the ways that this ancient Hebrew scripture is a, is really telling us, or has a lot to say about who we are as followers of Jesus. So just some oversight for this chapter. This, this chapter begins and mainly focuses on this encounter with Boaz and this other of their kinsfolk and him trying to do right by Ruth. And so Ruth, as we talked about last week, is kind of faded from view, except by mention only. But those mentions of her are incredibly important and strategic. And so we'll talk about that. There are strange customs that are all throughout this, you know, one of them involves handing, taking off a sandal and handing it to somebody. What does all that mean? Because those small details, they, they seem so like alien and weird and small, but they really have great significance with what takes place in the chapter. And then the, the end of this powerful narrative, this, this chapter four here is much different than its beginnings. But what we see is that it's not a rags to riches story, but rather a grief to new life story, grief to resurrection story, or death to hope. And it shows us how redemption greets us in rather surprising ways. This is an interesting image of Ruth Boaz and Obed. Also, well, why don't we jump right into it? Someone like to read here the first six verses?
I will. I'm away from my Bible because I can't see the whole. Meanwhile, meanwhile, Boaz went up from the town gate and sat down there just as the guardian redeemer. He had mentioned came along. Boaz says, come over here, my friend, and sit down. So he went over and sat down. Boaz took ten of the elders of the town and said, sit here, and they did so. Then he said to the guardian redeemer, Naomi, who has come back from Moab is selling this piece of land that belonged to our relatives. And remember, Emelak, okay? I thought I should bring the matter to your attention and suggest that you buy it in the presence of those seated here and in the presence of the elders of my people. If you will redeem it, do, do so. But if you will not tell me, so I will know, so I will know. For no one has the right to do it except you and I in the next in line. Let's see. I will redeem it, he said. Then Boaz said, on the day you buy, buy the land from Naomi, you also acquire Ruth, the Moabite, the dead man's widow, in order to maintain the name of the dead with his property. What, do what, six? Okay, as this, the guardian redeemer said, then I cannot redeem it because I might endanger my own estate. You redeem it yourself. I cannot do it.
It's a lot going on here. Boaz is working it. So what, what do you hear and see and wonder about in this, these first verses?
I always wondered if, excuse me, I got choked at supper and I'm still messed up. Anyway, I always wondered if Boaz knew that this next of kin would not buy it with those conditions and was just going through the motion to cover all these bases so that everything was cool.
It certainly, yeah, it certainly seems like he, he sets it up the way he wants it here, puts the check pieces in the right places, yeah. What else?
Always thought it was interesting that they listened to Boaz when he said, sit here, and they did so.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, he did. He's even like, he's, he's taking care of even the smallest logistics there like that. You sit here, you guys come over here. Is this? It's the first time there that Boaz says Ruth, the Moabite.
Emphasizing her differentness.
Right, right. Yeah, he's emphasizing it here. So this is a, I'm calling this little section here, family matters, because it's like, because obviously family matters because of all this stuff that they're going through. But also, this, this is dealing with matters of the family. And so kind of like that TV show, right? A great show. But we think about all that Ruth's been through. Ruth endured great risks. She has no protection as an immigrant, as an enemy of people of Israel. To draw Boaz's attention, like not, nothing, you know, even though Boaz is meant well. And he has, Boaz in a way has yet to reckon with and return the kindness that would heal and make Ruth's risks right. And so now he, he makes his move, like he's making good on it. If you remember, Naomi was like, you know, trust me, he's not going to let the day go by before he gets all this taken care of. That's how the, the last chapter ended. But Boaz is now making his move and right, you guys totally picked up on what's going on. He is very strategic here. So this is a complex. It's layered with religion and, and legalities and politics. It's kind of a civil arrangement that takes place between Boaz and this next of kin in, in, in midrash and also in the actual Hebrew here. His name is, is so and so. It's like the Hebrew equivalent of so and so. So they don't even give this guy a name. He's, he's kind of almost like a foil, like he's, or a fool in the narrative. So his so and so, that's really literally what they call him. So, so and so and Boaz. And it begins with, and he talks about Ruth as, as a Moabite. And so like, the idea is like, will we ever escape this? Or is he using it in another way here? And we'll see. Boaz is being so, so clever. We see a new side of him. So far, he's been more of, you know, the kind of the gracious benevolent kind of, I'm making provision for Ruth and creating space for her and seeing to her protection. But now he gets strategic and, and he, he's scheming on a Naomi level, maybe even more here. He's very shrewd, smart, and even calculating in how he approaches so and so. He says, come over, friend. And he's doing this at the gate. And the city gate would have been a very public, public square kind of area where people would gather, maybe even like makeshift marketplaces could have been set up. So there was a lot of foot traffic. And so Boaz may have premeditatively watched where so and so goes from day to day. So he knows he's going to come by this point, part at some point. And so he, he happens to catch him. He's, oh, come over, friend. And he does it in the sight of a lot of people that were there in the square. And he even sees some of the elders of the town over there. He says, hey, you guys come over here and I want you to, I want you to see this. I need to, I need to settle something here. And so basically, he sets up like a civil, a civil court almost kind of thing in the middle of this public square so that he can handle this matter and they're going to be witnesses. Isn't that so clever? I mean, it's like, it's, it's like, he didn't have very long, but he just comes up with this plan and just shows shrewd about it. One of the possible meanings of Boaz's name in the Hebrew is swiftness. And you know, there's, there's other, there's other meanings of his name, but one of them is, might, might be swiftness. And he seems to embody that here. He comes up with this plan. He carefully crafts it. He carries it out. The conversation that he has with so and so is very, very calculated, you know, kind of inviting, come here, friend. I got something I want to talk to you about. And then it becomes this whole other thing, right? And, and, and so it all happens again within your side of the public. And so everybody's privy to this, this very family, family matter that's, that needs to be settled. So any questions or comments about all that?
So Patrick, am I understanding you to say you feel like that Boaz put the tag on there, the Moabite, to maybe discourage him from taking the land?
Yeah, I honestly think that that's probably what he's doing there. And, and that's, yeah, 100%. Actually, we're gonna, we're gonna unpack that because that is such a, it is so peculiar that after all of Boaz's hospitality and the hesed, the loving kindness that he's extended, it would, it would, it would be strange for him to suddenly be speaking to her and about, about her in a derogatory way. Okay. And so, yeah, that's around the money.
Does taking the land also signify taking Ruth? Was that like part and parcel of the same or two separate things?
Right. So we, yeah, when we talked about like the, like the next of kin thing, I think, I think I talked about it, but it's, it's like with the way the next of kin thing, where the levirate marriage with the brother marrying the widow or next of kin taking control and, and saving them. The idea behind that is it, it was either, it either had to do with someone's personhood, their dignity as a person, or with the property that they owned. And so Boaz knows that both of those things are like two sides of the same coin. But, and so, but he, he just, he begins, because apparently so and so, this guy doesn't know all the details of what's going on with Elimelech and Naomi's household and property and all this. And so he just, he pulls them in with the property bit, and then he throws in the, the Ruth bit after that. But it would be, if you were to redeem, in the case of this, there being a widow and property, you would need to do the whole thing. But Boaz kind of feeds him pieces of information at a time as part of his, his kind of plan here to do that. And so, yeah, so that, that's exactly what happens, that this closer kinsman, he initially accepts Boaz's offer when it's just about the property. But suddenly, when, when Ruth is, is attached to it, his mind suddenly changes. And the question is, is it because of all that baggage that's attached to Ruth and Naomi in their widowhood, their lost status, the possibility of children? Ruth being a Moabite, was it too much for him? And so he, initially, he agrees. You're right. He agrees with Boaz to redeem the property of Elimelech and Naomi. But upon hearing that he also has to marry Ruth, the Moabite, again, that's exactly right, thinking that this is like the most strategic use of her ethnicity so far is to label her that to put the, to put the thought in his head, oh, I gotta marry a Moabite. And according to the law, Moabites are not allowed to marry into Israelite households. And they have no status in Israel. They are enemies because they did not show us hospitality when we were suffering in the desert. And so he backs out because if he were to ever have any children with Ruth, because she was able to bear children, they would inherit some of his wealth or all of it. And in his eyes, that means that his ancestral land, his wealth, all of it would pass out of ownership of his family as a family of pure Israelites. And thus, it would pass out of possession of the people of Israel. Because all of the, their ideas in ancient Israel, the connection, their connection was to land. And it was communal connection. There are ideas of like the year of Jubilee and sabbatical years and things where debts were forgiven. Land was restored to original ownership and things like that. And so all that would be unavailable, at least in his interpretation of the law. And so marrying Ruth would only make sense if she would, if she was considered to be an Israelite despite her foreign status. And he obviously does not consider her that. He again holds fast to that Torah prescription that Israel's relationship is blessed of God. Moab, Moab is the enemy and anything to do with Moabites is bad. And so this guy, oh, so and so, he shows himself to be both unkind and unwise. And as, as one commentator put it, which I can't kind of credit for this, is just brilliant. He said, he's willing to be poor in order to be pure. And isn't that, isn't that an analogy and image for how life as a human being is, is those of, those who insist on purity, be it racial purity or any kind of ethnic purity or anything like that, any kind of like white supremacy, stuff like that. We make ourselves poorer with those ways of thinking and living in the world. You know, we, we impoverish our lives because we think that our way or of being, of living, of acting, of speaking, of looking is the only and appropriate way to be. And so it's kind of an analogy here of, oh, so and so, he's willing to be poorer in order to maintain what he perceives to be his purity as a certain type of person. And so that's just something to chew on when thinking about this. Any other questions or comments? I'd love to, love to field anything y'all have on your mind, good or bad or so, so. We'll keep moving then. Let's get this next section here, seven through 12. Would someone like to read for us?
I'll read. Now, in earlier times in Israel, for the redemption and transfer of property to become final, one party took off his sandal and gave it to the other. This was the method of legalizing transactions in Israel. So the guardian redeemer said to Boaz, buy it yourself. And he removed his sandal. Then Boaz announced to the elders and all the people, today you are witnesses that I have bought from Naomi all the property of Amiliac, Kilion, and Malon. I have also acquired Ruth, the Moabite, Malon's widow, as my wife in order to maintain the name of the dead with his property so that his name will not disappear from among his family or from his hometown. Today you are witnesses. Then the elders and all the people at the gate said, we are witnesses. May the Lord make the woman who is coming into your home like Rachel and Leah, who together built up the family of Israel. May you have a standing in Ephrathorah and be famous in Bethlehem. Through the offspring, the Lord gives you by this young woman. May your family be like that of Perez, whom Tamar bore to Judah. Is that where you want me to stop?
That's great. That's perfect. Yeah, sorry. You always get the passages with all.
You know, when I read an Alder's Gate for you, I have all those hard words.
It's every time.
I've learned just to sputter through them.
Well, um, yeah, what, what, what's happening here? What do you see? What's going on? What's, what are you wondering about?
Well, he definitely made sure that he had enough witnesses. And he made sure they understood step by step by step by step. Why he owned, why he didn't own, who took care of what. It seemed to me that it was like a, a list, you know? He thought this out.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He knew exactly how to, how to find his, his way through the, you know, to make it work.
And what selflessness it was when he said that he was going to do this so that his name will not disappear from among the family or from his hometown.
Yeah, it's a way, it's a way of, it was really important in ancient Israel that, that names like that not be erased if possible. That's part of the, that's part of kind of the, the idea of a redeeming kinsman is to come along to take, to marry the widow. And in some cases, like especially if it was levirate, levirate marriage, where the brother would marry the widow. The children that the, the widow and the brother had together were still considered children of the deceased man.
Oh, wow.
So in, in Ruth's case, if, if Malon's brother was Boaz and they married, and maybe even in the case with their own marriage, his, it would still be called the children of Malon.
Oh, wow.
As a way to honor that, that dead kins, person who died, whose children they would have been otherwise, so. Anything else you see in here? Lots of callback names, Rachel and Leah. It goes all the way back to Genesis, right? The wives of Jacob and Tamar and Judah.
Well, Patrick, isn't it true that having children never was taken for granted in Israel, that this could look like a God's blessing? I mean,
100%, yeah.
Okay.
Because, yeah, like I think we talked about like the covenant that was made with Abraham, right, is that I will make your descendants as numerous as the sands and the, you know, the ground, the desert and the, the stars in the sky. And it's a sense that it's through progeny. It's through his, you know, the way the, the scripture puts it in its own kind of more, I guess we would consider it a crude way to speak, but through his seed, through his descendants, the world will be blessed. And that numerous, that, that, the, that number of people coming out of, you know, his, his descent was a sign that God's covenant was passed through progeny, through having children and stuff like that.
Right, okay.
Which is why in a lot of ways, Jews are not, I guess, in the sense about evangelism and converting people, you don't see like a lot of like Jews that would be in our communities who are out, you know, trying to tell people about their God and their faith and to get them to convert. Now, if people want to convert to Judaism, that's great. They're happy to have you. But they, there's not that sense, there's not that evangelistic impulse that is so native to Christianity there. Mostly because the idea of the covenant is that we pass that through our children, so.
I had never put this all together, that kinsman redeemer and the leverate measure, marriage and such, that that all ties in with the purity of Israel and the people and Jubilee and how this all is to be maintained as it always has been. I'd never put that all together. And I, I have found that fascinating to think about all that.
Yeah, it's, it's remarkable because all of this, this whole time has been, this whole story has been about a foreigner whose presence, who's just her presence amiss of people, is putting their entire way of life that God has handed over to their care to the test to see if they pass muster of this. And it's not like, it's not that God was testing Israel, but it's that this situation brought about this moment and opportunity for them to say, hey, yeah, we're really about this. This is serious. Because remember, the context for this is in the time of the judges. When, you know, there was no king in Israel and everybody did what was right in their own eye. Yeah, so it's, it's really a chaotic time and a dangerous, violent time to be alive. So the idea that all of this is taking place is very, is very significant. So what's going on here with the whole like sandal thing and this disagreement between two parties? You know, this is, there's precedent for this in Deuteronomy 25. And this is continuing on from the, the section from Deuteronomy 25 that we read a few times ago about the kinsman redeemer. And here it says, if the man has no desire to marry his brother's widow, then his brother's widow shall go up to the elders at the gate. Oh, where are we? Where is all this happening, guys? With the elders at the gate of the city, right? And say, my husband's brother refuses to perpetuate his brother's name in Israel. He refuses to, you know, basically, he won't perform the duty of a husband's brother to me. He will not marry me and have children with me so that my dead husband's name can live on. Then the elders of the town shall summon him and speak to him. If he persists saying, I have no desire to marry her, then his brother's wife shall go up to him in the presence of the elders, pull his sandal off his foot, spit in his face and declare that is to be done to the man who does not build up his brother's house. Throughout Israel, his family shall be known as the house of him whose sandal was pulled off.
That's funny.
And so here, we have Boaz doing this to old so and so. To the kinsman redeemer, basically pulling him out into public and saying, hey, clearly you're not, you're, you're this, you, you think this way. I don't think this way. I think this is a situation that calls for mercy and that there should be provision made to, to handle Naomi's and Elimelech's estate and secure Ruth's future. And so in front of everyone, we're going to do this whole thing where you pull off your sandal. I pull off your sandal and declare that, you know, you're not going to do this thing. And so therefore, I will do this thing. You are not assuming your duties. And so I just, I just.
When it says in verse eight, he removed his sandal. He was removing so and so's sandal.
Correct. That's right.
Oh, okay. I didn't get that.
Me either.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. After you showed us Deuteronomy.
Yeah. Yep, you, you are witnesses today. It's, it's, it's hard because, I mean, there's all, it's just pronouns there. So if he removed his sandal, that could mean I removed my own sandal. Could mean I moved somebody else's sandal. Right, yeah. But I think the idea there, based on the, the Deuteronomy text, is that Boaz removes so and so's sandal.
We didn't have that knowledge base you did, so we missed that.
I didn't, I had no idea. I had to learn about that for this week. Because I had no idea what the sandal bit meant. I had to go look at it, so. But in, in this whole scene, that the fact that Boaz can summon the elders of the town to the square to hear his legal case reminds us that he's a man of considerable stature in the community. He has, he has some chutzpah, I guess you could say in the community. And so basically Boaz challenges the elders. I mean, and this is remarkable. This is truly remarkable. Everything is taking place in this conversation. Boaz in enacting this thing where he removes the redeeming, the other kinsman's sandal and makes them witnesses to this act of him handing off the, I guess, the, it's not a, we might say it's like a birthright kind of thing, his, his lawful duty to fulfill this for Naomi. He is challenging the people around him, all the folks that are gathered there to recognize that the spirit of the law in the Torah may be more significant in some cases than the letter of the law. He's attempting to persuade the folks of Bethlehem to extend to Ruth the full protections of the law that so far she has been denied as a Moabite immigrant, so that she might become a full member of the people of God. Basically, Boaz is assuming a risk and saying, I see here is this already. And now I'm inviting you to bear witness to the fact that in my redemption of her and everything that was Naomi's and Elimelech's, she is a full member of this community. So he's trying to extend it to her. So he offers his intent to marry her. And in this, his, his children with her will have full inheritance rights in Israel. So basically, what we see here is we see Boaz harnessing his power and his privilege, his status in society in Bethlehem to ensure that Ruth's identity, dignity and future are things that can happen and take place and are preserved. Things that Ruth already knew that she had and deserved, but things that Boaz has now ensured in real life, actually practically that, that she will receive. And so isn't, isn't that just remarkable? And it's, and it's not that Boaz is gaming the system as much as he's getting people to realize the, the, the real spirit of the law. It's not necessarily, and we're going to talk about this some next week with, because you put Ruth in conversation with books like Ezra and Nehemiah. It's a sense of how do you interpret the law? You know, and it's the sense that You know, and it's uh the sense that kind of what Jesus is always pointing out that. You know, sometimes religious leaders who are due much respect and and listening to like the Pharisees. They deserve to be heard and they deserve to be learned from. Uh they also sometimes take the law a little too seriously and legalistically in ways that are actually oppressing people rather than helping them to live a full life. And so a lot of ways we see Jesus calling everyone back to the spirit of the law and its intent. Which is to reflect the holiness of God and to call the people of Israel to live within that holiness. Those these are the dynamics that are playing. We see Boaz kind of doing that here. He's not, he's not saying necessarily that. We just throw the baby out with the bathwater, he's saying, no, let's let's interpret this another way, a better way, a way that perhaps God intends for us to. I mean, I think about, and this is what I have here at the bottom, and we can talk about this for a minute, because I'd love to hear. Uh kind of y'all's thoughts on the all, everything that's going on in this this section too. It's like. We can respond to a need or we can address the circumstances that cause the need in the first place, right? So. Um so for example, if we wanna say we wanna do something about poverty, well, we can act compassionately, we can open food banks, we can offer utility assistance and we do those things. Um but sometimes the bigger question is, like, what is making people poor? Not like, not, how do we, I think there's a place for both, because sometimes people just need relief, right? They need food, they're hungry, they need to eat. But also, uh we need to be addressing what causes people to be hungry. What is causing people to fall underneath the poverty line? So there's a sense at which. There's a way that we meet needs, but there's also ways that we need to advocate for things like policy changes and to get at the root cause. Boaz. Here is striking at a root cause. He's saying, the way the law has been interpreted in these instances is denying people their full humanity. Uh and while in some situations we might can use the law that way, in this situation, this isn't working out. Um this and it's not that God is, that God in giving the law was wrong, but perhaps the way that we've interpreted and used the law. In our time might need to be different than when it was first devised, right? We need to be thinking and. That the scripture is alive, it's living, God's spirit is constantly speaking to us. Um it need not be a rigid thing, but rather something that we approach as a living conversation partner. Through which God continues to speak to us. So he's not just trying to say like, let's just um make sure Ruth is set for life. Let's get the people to understand a new way to think about the law. Y'all have any thoughts on that?
Think it's much, I think for me, it's much easier to do the Band-Aid. It's much easier for me to go get food for Marcy and take it to her than. Try to change what's causing people to be in poverty. So and and then you think, okay, I've done this, so that's okay. So I, for me personally, it's an easy way out. I feel like I've done something. But then I really haven't, I've just kind of put a Band-Aid on it.
But but in a way, it's a two-way street, like you said. I mean, when you're helping someone that's hungry, um. You know, they don't, they don't really need to hear how policies need to change.
Needs have to be met.
Yeah, basic needs have to be met, you know, so, so.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right, y'all. It is, it is a both and thing. I mean, and it's it's like, it's, and I, and I, don't hear me as. One to the detriment of the other here, but it's just like one of those things where there's a place for both things. And I think that in addition to meeting needs, we also ought to be at least asking the questions of, why, why are so many people hungry right now? What what is the real issue that's causing so much like, yeah, this weekend we're having the food distribution, right? So that's like a compassion relief thing. Um but if we have a ton of people show up and just say, for instance, we have double the people show up that we have food for. Then that 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 must lead us to ask the question, well, what's causing all this? You know, what can we do that more or on a deeper level that's to address this?
Yeah, and it's very difficult, you know, I I sit on a board and. We have direct support staff that we cannot pay. Because we don't get the money from the state to pay those direct support staff as they should be paid. And we're trying so hard as a board to get their salaries up. But it's so difficult. Um so that's kind of why I say sometimes the easier, a lot of us just take the easier way out. I mean, we're not going to as a board, but you know, we've been struggling with this for years to try, to try to get the direct source to support staff salary up. But it's just takes forever.
Right, I mean, and and that just goes to show that there are systems at work here that make, sometimes make those those things that I think are. Are just causes and worthwhile endeavors so much more difficult than they always, than they have to be.
Right, it's not just us and our budget, you know, it's.
That's right, that's right.
Gives us the money and it, you know, it's just, it's just a domino effect. But we're gonna keep trying.
Good, yeah, I think, and I think that's the, you know, this, I've um. In 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 conference business and district business, sometimes at church, like some, you know, sometimes we have to be a squeaky wheel and a thorn in the side until we. Get heard by the right people, you know, so.
Right.
Is this the same in any institution? So uh so, yeah, so here, like Boaz is assuming a risk and claiming Ruth is kin because she's not, right? Uh he's claiming her as one who belongs, as someone who um. Who who has the rights to these things that an Israelite would have. And so um he pursues. Consensus from the people and elders of Bethlehem about the same, he's saying, so I see this, I'm inviting you to declare this as such too. And perhaps he's thinking and using, like I said, his power and privilege, knowing that he has those things. Knowing that he has the ability to sway the elders and folks in town to see his point of view here and what he's doing. And so Boaz seems, he leaves it in their hands. I mean, they could say, no, this isn't right, you can't do this and shun him in a way. But he seems to have confidence that all these folks are gonna shed generations of prejudice against Moabites and welcome Ruth uh into kinship. Good thing is, his instinct was correct. The people.
It goes back to what Cynthia said, he had to educate them first.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, he had to make them aware of something.
Right.
Y'all know who James Baldwin is, I'm sure. He said, um, you know, famous writer, um wrote Go Tell on the Mountain and a bunch of other stuff, civil rights uh icon. He's, he said. Uh if I love you, I have to make you aware of things you don't see. And I feel like in a way what Boaz is doing here with his fellow Bethlehemites is saying, I love you, so I need to help you see this thing that you don't see. So you can change. And I think that's a word for all of us too, and and what he does. And and the people agree, they they say, you know what? You're right, we have no legitimate reason to deny this from this taking place. And so they offer this blessing over Boaz and Ruth and and it's not a, it's not a small thing that they do this. Uh this, their blessing, their words that they share as kinsfolk and townsfolk, uh they. Uh it marks their transformation. This is the transformation moment in this book. Uh when the people of Bethlehem, they move from excluding Ruth uh as prescribed by the letter of the law to seeing the application of that law. In this case, as unkindness and oppressive to her. And so instead, they opt for the spirit of the law, which is always chesed, loving kindness. Um extending mercy, being merciful as you have been shown mercy. Remember, you were slaves in the land of Egypt. Um living out loving kindness is the means by which the law is fulfilled, right? It makes sense here, it preserves life. This is how we live out the law. Um if is it showing loving kindness to Israelite and stranger alike? And so that's what happens, the challenge to the living out of the law which Ruth offered in her bodily risks and Boaz and his legal arguments. It comes to pass in the transformation here of the people of Bethlehem to see Ruth as someone who belongs. And it's, it's really significant that they add Ruth to a list of matriarchs. Tamar.
Yeah.
In her own way, though she is not an Israelite by birth, uh she still somehow has found a way to belong. She is not an Israelite, she's still a Moabite, to the bitter, to the very end, she's a Moabite, yet she belongs now to God's people. And this is kind of the, you know, we focused in on the personal stuff so far in this book, but in in Ruth, in this last chapter, we. Pull back and we see this kind of communal transformation that's taking place through the actions of our main characters in this story. It's really quite beautiful. It's something that I've always kind of missed when I've read this, is this transformation that takes place in the community around the people that we, that we follow. I wanna read this last section here. It, there's a lot of names, if if nobody wants to, I'll take care of it if it's fine. All right.
For it, Patrick.
All right, hang on a second, I need to, I can see the whole thing here. So Boaz took Ruth and she became his wife. When they came together, the Lord made her conceive and she bore a son. Then the women said to Naomi, blessed be the Lord who has not left you this day without next of kin. And may his name be renowned in Israel. He shall be to you a restorer of life and a nourisher of your old age, for your daughter-in-law who loves you, who is more to you than seven sons has borne him. Then Naomi took the child and laid him in her bosom and became his nurse. The women of the neighborhood gave him a name, saying, a son has been born to Naomi. They named him Obed, and he became the father of Jesse, the father of David. Now, these are the descendants of Perez. Perez became the father of Hezron and Hezron of Ram and Ram of Amenadab and Amenadab of. Naschan and Naschan of Salmon and Salmon of Boaz, Boaz of Obed, Obed of Jesse and Jesse of David. What do you hear in this, this closing section of this beautiful little book?
It kind of wraps it all up and ties it with a bow.
Yeah, but yeah, this is kind of the uh, in a sense, the hallmark, uh the hallmarkiness of this book right here.
The Hallmark movie.
We've come back around to the, to nothing but good stuff, it seems.
I like the verse, I like, I like the verse that says, Heshab be to you a restorer of life. And a nourisher of your old age.
Little baby does that, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Naomi is no longer bitter.
That's right. For you, I I love this, like, this naming of what Ruth is to Naomi, this daughter-in-law who loves you, who is more to you than seven sons. Another exclamation of the love that they share together, these two women.
And that says a lot too because of the position that women held.
That's right.
You know.
Yeah, just to say that, that Ruth is more to Naomi than seven sons, when all of the wealth and security that seven sons could give to you.
Exactly. Yeah.
I think that the the sentence that gets me too is. A son has been born to Na- Naomi.
That is so weird, isn't it? Why would they?
Hits me. Yeah, a son had been born to Naomi, and that really puts Bruce in the background.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you very much.
We're gonna lean into that, because that is a peculiar phrase there. Anything else you see in there? Well, uh. As as has been the case throughout this whole book, God is in the background. Um and God is certainly present as Boaz and Ruth consummate their marriage. And uh their passion for each other, God is there. God, again, read this as, like we've said this whole time, is God's presence within the ordinary. Um the ordinariness of human love and uh the consummation of a marriage. Uh even sex, God is present in the ordinary and brings forth uh life in that, right? Um so the intimacy that Ruth announced to Naomi in chapter one, that, you know, where you go, I go where you say, I'll stay. This, this is kind of mirrored here with their joining with with Boaz, right? Their new possibilities spring out of their passion, their desire, their intimacy, their loyalty to each other in this new relationship, uh and they're blessed with a son. And that's the real question, like what what Doris uh was bringing up, is a son's born, but how is he going to be known? Uh because so much of this story, as we found out, hangs on the names of the people who were there. Um, you know, Naomi, sweetness, who becomes bitterness, who becomes sweetness again. Right, and and, you know, this idea of um who will he belong to in the eyes, uh in the eyes and on the lips of other people? Will he be known as uh Malon's child by Boaz? Will he be called Boaz's son? Is he the son of Ruth or is he Naomi's child, as as is mentioned there? It's a. It's peculiar, isn't it? I I wonder if it's not a way for them to. With Naomi being. In a sense, his grandmother. I guess, still, um by the way, their relations would would work. Uh saying that uh he is her child is a way of saying that she's gotten back what she lost in the form of the son. Uh through Ruth. It is peculiar how Ruth is just kind of like left out of that whole bit there, right? After she conceives and has a child, it's all about how this restores Naomi.
Well, I think. Go ahead.
No, it's fine.
I was gonna say, it it, to me, it's kind of, that we're kind of looking at that with our modern eyes and. The way that we, that the place that women have now, as opposed to where women were held in the, in the culture then. And it goes along with the uh marriage laws and all that stuff, but um, you know, it goes back, it follows the line.
Yeah. Yeah, a- a- and it is, yeah, it's it's definitely has a lot to do with all those ways, because I mean, for all, for all we know. You know, Ruth was the mother of the child, the Ruth, I mean, the child may have been best identified as as being. Of of Naomi. Y'all remember Naomi and her husband?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what I was gonna say, I feel like really this book is more a story about Naomi than Ruth. How she, all the loss she had at the beginning of it and then at the end, this becomes almost in a way her child. And and I I just love the kind of theme of the circle of life, how. You know, y'all know I talk about that a lot, but anyways, um, you know, sadness bec- can become happiness again through. The circle of life, really.
Right, right, that's, yeah, I think, yeah, I I I love that. Yeah, I. I think it, yeah, and I think, I think it's, I I was looking here, this commentary had opened, because I I wanted to to. To to hang on this for a second, was like, says, it's by no means necessary to see Naomi's act here. Of taking the son and nursing him and then saying, oh, this name, you know, a child has been, a son has been born to Naomi. Uh it's, it's not saying that she's like formally adopts the child. Um, because that would be odd and unnerving in in ancient Israel for a grandmother to adopt a grandchild while the mother was still alive. That would have been. Awkward and not look, that would have been frowned upon. So, so it's not, I I think it's more in the eyes of the people around her. They're seeing this, um, they are seeing a uh. A a redemption in Naomi's life, giving back of all that was lost in war, the possibility of future. And I I think, you know, with with the birth of Obed, uh a lot of things change, right? This, it's the actions of of Boaz and Ruth. Over and again, that have em- that have demonstrated kindness in the midst of a chaotic time and and in a very uh strict world. Uh and and in the midst of that, wrongs are righted and people are transformed. And for all of Ruth's work, however, it feels like she's getting slighted by putting, put, being pushed to the back, but. Um but there's something underneath going on, and that is this thing that's been happening throughout this entire book. And the book itself doesn't say it, but we know it because we've been seeing it the whole time, is that the law. Here, which is the reflections of God's holiness and presence, has turned toward Ruth. Has opened a way for her, uh and in a sense, we could say uh. By association here that God has turned toward Ruth and has seen Ruth, knows Ruth, has made space. For Ruth among the covenant people. And that's such a, uh, that is. Kind of the big thing coming out of the book, um is not only Naomi's redemption, but the fact that God has lifted up a Moabite of all people. To to return a people to their their best self, their their God covenant self. And it's a really beautiful thing. So Obed's name means one who serves. And if if you think about it, that's a pretty modest meaning for a name compared to what some biblical names mean. Um and, but he comes from modest, from modest people in the story, right? People like Ruth. But um but his birth, uh as as is evidenced with all these lineages here at the end, that ties all of this together. Uh it's a progr- signaling a progression of Israel's story towards this next chapter, where the time of the judges ends with Samuel. Samuel, we think of as a prophet, but he's really named it, he's the last judge of Israel, and the beginning of Israel's monarchy with Saul. Uh which, who would then be replaced with who? David, right? So Obed becomes next in this genealogy that leads us to King David. But what's important here in the book of Ruth is that Ruth is linked with this lineage. Uh and it and it apparently stayed that way for centuries in Israel because Ruth is mentioned in Matthew's lineage of Jesus, which is really important. Uh, and it, and it apparently stayed that way for centuries in Israel because Ruth is mentioned in Matthew's lineage of Jesus, which is really important. Uh, not only her, but also Tamar, uh, who was the mother of Perez, who was a Canaanite, who was a foreigner like Ruth. Um, though she's not mentioned, uh, mentioned as such in Ruth. Uh, or mentioned in Ruth in this sense, in this, this line here. She's mentioned earlier, but not in this, uh, lineage, but she was the mother of Perez. Who they draw back to here. Uh, and the fact that she's mentioned too is interesting because both of these women, if you go back and read their stories. Uh, both of them are bound up in stories where a public comment surrounds things like childlessness and foreign status. There's questions of progeny. Dead husbands, shame, risk and self-reliance for these women. Uh, both are subject to the whims of patriarchal societies and laws. And yet both of them, by the end of their time or storylines, are praised for their actions. And what they do to insist that their place is, is among God's people. They challenge norms. Uh, and again, they, they demand that God's people be God's people. If this is who God has called you to be, then be that. And, uh, it's just so, it's so critical. Um, it, it's not a small thing that, that she gets, uh, solidified in, into this Ruth. Um, and these stories show us that belonging is thicker than blood. Um, people say you can choose your friends, but you can't choose your family, but, uh, in this instance, we find out that, um. You know, and I know that's dealing with like troublesome family members, but. God says that we can't just do away with troublesome people who come our way. Uh, we have to find and acknowledge that the, the divine dwells within them and that God is creating a place for them. And this is what Jesus shows us in his own life and death and resurrection. Uh, he says, and when I am raised up from the earth, I will draw all people to myself. I actually preached on that this weekend, so that line there, but. This is that, this is what's going on here. Isn't it so great though? There's a place for Naomi, there's a place for Ruth, there's a place for even those in history like Tamar. Who may have been overlooked and, uh, looked down upon. This is one of, uh, my professors from Duke Divinity School. She's one of the, the greatest Old Testament scholars in the whole world. Um, that's not just be saying that because I like her, but she literally is recognized as, as one of the leading, uh, theologians on the Old Testament. She says. Uh, about Ruth, she says, the book of Judges ends with deception, false piety, death and violence, notably. The most graphic stories depict the abduction, rape, death, and even dismemberment of women. And with that, the dismemberment of the people of Israel. In shock contrast, the book of Ruth centering so much on the creative acts of women ends with birth, not death. A baby named and nurtured in the company of women. And I think that so beautifully sums up both the context of this dangerous time in the book of Judge, or in the time of the judges. But also how this story of Ruth is redeeming so much more than just a family and a people. It's redeeming an entire time. An entire saga of Israel's history. And it's doing so through women and foreign women. And it's, uh, it's so, we, we don't think, we think the Bible sometimes is kind of a monolith. You know, it's all about the dudes and what they do and stuff. And because we think, oh, well, these are patriarchal societies. And so obviously the men are going to always be the, the leaders and the ones who carry the story forward, but. Uh, we have this ancient text in Ruth that takes place in an even more ancient time. That's telling us about, uh, again, like Dr. Davis says, um, uh, the creative acts of women. That, uh, by which the people come into their own. And I think that's just really wonderful. So, um. What are y'all's takeaways tonight?
I keep having a word that just keeps going through my mind and throughout this whole book is transformation. You know, that, that how, how Naomi was transformed. Uh, from being bitter to being sweet, how, uh, Ruth is transformed. Um, being drawn to Boaz. But the other thing is, is that through all of it, God's in control. You know, that, 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 that I take that away from, from a lot of things that, you know, I'm not in control. God's, God's gonna always be in control.
And there's so much of that there. I mean, this is just, it's just beneath the surface.
Yeah. I think that's one of the comforting things. You know, I remember when the first week, Patrick, when you were talking about it, is that you never really. Hear God talking or you never really talk about. God's not really talked about, but now that we're through it, like Cynthia said. It reminds us that God is doing, is in everything we do, even though it, you know, may not be. Jumping out at our face. Um, so when I think back about it, to see God's fingers in everything is very comforting.
Yeah, and I think we've, we've, you know, like so, so much of our lives, we, I think we notice God in retrospect, uh, and not always in the moment. And I think this book is so great at helping us to, to level with that and how God is so very present in very human things. And I think Jesus is the ultimate example of that. That reminds us that God is very present and concerned with very human things. Very ordinary things. What else? Well, I have some things here to think about. Yeah, make a second, read it. So some pretty big takeaways here. Ruth's Hesed, her loving kindness was a force of faith and politics. That changes the way people saw border crossers, intercultural, interracial marriage. We didn't really talk about that, but that's what Boaz and Ruth's marriage is. And the possibility of a shared existence in the world, uh, between enemies. Uh, and I think that the surprise of this story is that the people of Bethlehem are enriched not by plundering their enemies. And destroying them, but by finding space to welcome them into their midst and to then risk being changed by that stranger. Um, and even in spite of all that, it's important to remember that Gentile existence in Israel remains complicated. And it will be complicated, uh, until even after Jesus's resurrection. Uh, and so it's not something, it's not that Ruth solves this problem. But that Ruth opens up the world to us, a, a new world of understanding. Not just the law and the Torah, but also, uh, our shared humanity and how God calls us to care for one another. Um, at least if it's not, if the question isn't answered, it's at least expanded with more possibility. And then this quote from Paul in Galatians, I think is, is a huge statement that brings us back to the heart of it is for the whole law is fulfilled in this one command. You shall love your neighbor as yourself. Next week. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't think, next week, this is where we're gonna be going. It is the book of Ruth, a story for our time.
Very much so.
All right, what, what, Jerein, were you gonna say something else? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say Ruth opens the door. For Gentiles.
Right. It, it, yeah, there, it becomes, um. In a way, in the scriptures, I think, I mean, see, it's weird because in our, in our, we do our Old Testament chronologically, so Ruth's pretty early on, kind of in the judge's context. And, um, in the Hebrew Bible, it kind of comes toward the end. Um, it's situated thematically with, uh, near the books of Lamentations, Song of Songs, Esther Chronicles, some of those, so. And so, yeah, it's, it's in both places, it speaks, uh, it chronologically, it says, oh wait, there's precedent for this even early in Israel's history for this Gentile inclusion. And I think, uh, in, uh, perhaps in the Tanakh, the Hebrew scriptures or the, the Old Testament. And the way that it's arranged thematically, it perhaps speaks to there at the end where. A lot of the books are rehashing Israel's history to be reminded that this is the spirit of the law. So next week, we'll, we'll focus on those last, on just some conclusions. Um, and you know, I don't know that we'll have answers going out of it. We may end up with more questions than answers and that's okay. But, uh, we'll, um, we'll make the best of it and, uh, it may be one of these times where we're, um, I expect us to have a lot more just, uh. Discussion. I probably will be saying, what, what about this? What about this? And we'll just do some talking there, but. I will offer a prayer to close us tonight. I'm so grateful y'all were here, whether you're right here with me now or you're watching later. Let's pray. Oh God, how thankful we are, uh, to be immersed in your word. We pray that those things which we have been. Who, which have been brought up in questions and comments tonight will settle deeply into our hearts and do work on us. So that we might be transformed, just as we saw tonight, uh, in the lives of the people of Bethlehem. Uh, may we seek restoration and may we notice those around us, uh, whose stories need sharing, whose stories need hearing. We are so grateful to be together in following Jesus. And we pray that we would have the grace and energy to pursue that each and every day. Thank you, oh Lord, for this time together in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Patrick.